Small area plan that is a goal and objective to connect Broadwood Acres Road from its current existing stub where it stubs into this property all the way out to Meben Oaks Road. There's also future plans for the existing service road that runs along I-40 there for this to be a conduit of traffic to run through here. So, of course, we need that connection to Meben Oaks Road of Broadwood Acres, and this plan accomplishes that. Other development policy goals are to encourage compact and walkable development, to support aging in place, to reduce sprawl, to protect natural areas, improve accessibility, promote walkability, reduce infrastructure and maintenance costs over time. That's exactly what something like this does by focusing density and development at locations where you already have infrastructure, where you already have trips, where you already have destinations where people want to be. That makes the best use of what's already on the ground, what's already happening, and it works with it instead of against it to achieve all these types of goals that your comp plan has identified for us. We're also asked in your comprehensive plan to promote a mix of land uses, to promote open space for residential choice and activity, to provide residential choice through diversity of housing, through multiple versions of attractive and quality housing options. So, of course, that's what this plan is all about. It's a horizontal mixed use. It offers housing in two different formats, and we're able to achieve a nice transition and balance on the site that we'll talk about here in a moment and achieve this exact objective of your comprehensive plan to focus these walkable areas and transitions where they make sense. We're asked to increase density where infrastructure and mixed-use destinations better support walkability. We've talked about that. We have walkability, we have things people want to walk to here, and so what does it make sense to do is to put people here where they can actually walk to those things. So, in order to make sure we do that well, we are proposing a very walkable development. We have five-foot sidewalks, not only along Meben Oaks Road frontage, but also along both sides of Broadwood Acres Road. You heard Ms. Gaffney talk about how that's going to be a nice boulevard with traffic calming, not only the roundabout, but it's going to have a nice planted median divided entry you'll see in a moment. So, we really hope that to be not only a nice placemaking and identity feature, but also help promote that walkability and that accessibility for folks to feel like they can walk to Walmart, walk to those restaurants that are also in that shopping center, not only for folks who live here, but folks who can connect now through this project and get up to these walkable destinations. Pedestrian interconnectivity is something that your comp plan focuses a lot on. We've just covered that. As your growth management strategy is outlined, we're asked to consider three major objectives in your comprehensive plan. Move away from separation of uses. Again, trying to do that here by placing people nearby existing commercial, places where they want to go to shop to get their goods and services, places where they might work. People can get the opportunity to live, work, shop, all in the same place. Move away from unconnected roads. That's your second growth management strategy. Of course, we've been through your rigorous TRC process, and so this street network that you see before you is vetted and the one that has arrived upon through those processes and making sure that we meet your interconnectivity rules and guidelines in not only your comp plan, but your ordinance. Your third objective is to move away from conventional suburban development, move more towards the co-mingling of uses for reasons we've talked about and also for reasons of natural resource preservation. You heard from Ms. Gaffney, we do have a conservation area in the form of a stream buffer on this property, which we are protecting, and we're excited to do that and excited for the way it enhances our project. Finally, this project also allows for the integration of a community facility. This is another goal and objective from your Meben by Design, and for reasons we'll talk about, we are offering, as you've heard from the staff report, we are offering a dedication to the city for its use for whatever it feels is the best facilitation of a community asset here. Of course, as development comes to the city and as you take on new residents, new housing, and new impacts, that does raise the bar for ways to service that and ways for the city to continue to do and provide the quality of life that citizens expect. So, the way to achieve that, of course, is to ensure that the city is always looking out for ways to make sure that it has a way to do that. So, this was an opportunity where there was a balanced situation that could be reached, and so we have offered that dedication for the city to utilize in the way that it sees fit. So, this is the plan that we are submitting before you tonight. Recalling our discussion about the locational proximity to interstate, proximity to all the existing commercial intensity, things to walk to, existing infrastructure expenditures, for all of those reasons, we submit to you that this plan drops right in to what you've got on the ground and that existing land use pattern. What you see here is a plan that makes appropriate use of the high-intensity Meben Oaks Road corridor by focusing density along that corridor. You're getting a front door of a highly identifiable and placemaking project, which gives folks a place to live and easily access all of the amenities and goods and services that the city has provided for them at this location. From there, we want to be sensitive to and provide that transition that I talked about to step down to those single-family residences and citizens who live to the south of here. So, we've done that by, once we get across the middle of the site, we step down to all single-family. There's no townhomes here, there's no more multifamily, it's all single-family lots, and these are 8,000-square-foot minimum lots. We're not asking for any waiver or deviation from that. So, that's minimum 8,000-square-foot lots. We're not asking for any deviations from the setbacks. So, that's what you'll see here, which is very much in keeping with the Arbor Creek neighborhood next door that has a minimum of, I believe, 7,700-square-feet lots. So, very harmonious there, and that's very intentional on our part. We've also increased the planting buffers along the west and the south to ensure that there's separation there between the neighborhoods, just so that there's privacy and, you know, there's a distinction when you look out your backyard between where your yard ends and your neighbors begin. So, we want to have that for our neighbors, and we want to have that for our future residents. So, you do see the darker green outline of a perimeter buffer along our southern and western boundaries. The pond features, we'll have Aiden talk more about that, but those are located not only to meet our stormwater mitigation requirements, and we have exceeded what's required there, but also they're located in places where they make sense, the low areas around the natural topography, so that we're not having to regrade and recreate the way this dirt lies. So, we've tried to be thoughtful about that. For a little more technical insight here and just the thoughtfulness that went into this design, I would like to ask Aiden at this point to come and talk about some of the design features that we feel like really elevates this design tonight to your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Aiden Stoltz Fuess, Stoltz Fuess Engineering. I'm at 683 Grayland Street, Kernersville, North Carolina, and I'm happy to be here tonight. We've been working in Meben for a long time. It seems like I've spent a lot of time down here in Meben. But we're really excited about the project. Just a couple technical things for, Amanda kind of went over a lot of this, but I'll just briefly go over the sighting issue, the sighting that we had with the apartments and the single-family. As far as the east side of the project, it drops from Meben Oaks Road down to a stream and then up to Broadwood Acres Road. So, as far as where the apartments are setting at, the finished floors will probably be at or below, they're most likely would be below Meben Oaks Road, so those will be kind of nestled down into the site a little bit. The access, the cross-connection that we're proposing to the adjacent shopping center would provide vehicle access from inside the site without having to get back on Meben Oaks Road and pedestrian connectivity as well. So, we thought that was important to provide that. And as far as what we're proposing is the multifamily sites of phased, 320-phased apartment units with clubhouse, pool, electrical vehicle charging stations, bicycle parking, two dog parks and a playground, along with common areas. And then the landscape buffering, that would be per ordinance and stormwater control measures that are on the south side of Broadwood Acres Road. And so, the multifamily was placed on the east side to allow for closer access, both to interstate and retail. And as far as the multifamily project goes, we're proposing a sewer line that would extend to the north and potentially take out that Walmart pump station, and we're not actually going to take that pump station out, but that could be a resource for Meben to go do that at some point. So, I know that was a big deal when we went to TRC, and I think it's listed in the staff report as well. So, we would dedicate an easement to that. So, Broadwood Acres, as far as the, you know, we're proposing that as a median section with grass median to kind of slow traffic down. Wood rate traffic improvements, NC DOT and CDMevin both recommended for the connection that would be signalized. And then coming down to the roundabout, that will also be installed for traffic calming and just to try to reduce the traffic and break up that long straight section there. As far as for the single-family project, you know, the west side, the single-family, 96-phased homes with lots per CDMevin R8 standards. We're not asking for any kind of conditions that were lower than those lot standards. The lots are proposed to meet R8 dimensional requirements with standard street and typical end sidewalks. Are proposing to separate stormwater control measures from the multifamily, which would be the owner-controlled, and then the HOA, which would be HOA-controlled and maintained. So, we'll have a HOA, and really the owners would be responsible for the stormwater controls on the east side. We had a meeting with the neighborhood, and we did extend some buffering per their request. I do want to point out, we had some traffic controlling control at the end of Longleaf Pine Place in Sweet Gum, but we realized that there was a stop condition there at Longleaf Pine Place as a result. And so, that, as traffic enters to the west into the Arbor Creek neighborhood, that will be a stop condition. So, they'll have to stop before they go through there. And so, we did phase the project. I know the phasing plan is in your packet to try to phase all the construction from Meben Oaks Road towards Arbor Creek to try to just, you know, reduce the congestion of construction traffic. So, Phase Four of the single-family would be that final connection to Arbor Creek. And I think it's about it, and I think Amanda covered a lot of the other aspects of the project. I'll be happy to answer any technical questions that may come up after the presentation.
Before we move on to Chase to give an overview of the traffic process and improvements, I also want to mention one final thing about the layout. I talked earlier about balance and providing opportunities for the city to best meet all of its goals in terms of all the assets that it likes to provide in its provision of services and quality of life to citizens. So, as we worked through this with the TRC, we wanted to accomplish an exciting and viable multifamily project. We wanted to accomplish a harmonious and compatible single-family transition to our neighbors at Manorfield and Arbor Creek, and that's really what we set out to do here. So, once we did that, knowing the history, that the previous project did have a public offering and that that was already something that had been, you know, vetted around by the city, they'd spent some time on it, we felt like since we had already gotten a nice balance here and really, you know, found a way to do the things that we wanted to do, we wanted to continue to offer a public dedication here. So, that's really just some context and history on how that stayed in the plan, and we're happy that it did. I think it provides a nice way to, again, achieve that balance of new development, but also allowing the city a way to meet its goals as new development comes in. So, with that, we will move on to traffic improvements. I'd like to ask Chase Smith from Ramey Kemp to just go over that. I know you've heard about it from staff, but just wanted you to hear from our expert on the process there.
Good evening. Chase Smith with Ramey Kemp Associates, 5808 Farrington Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. As Amanda said and as staff has sort of laid out the traffic improvements before you, sort of how we get to that point, when the developer contacts us, our first contact is with city staff and NC DOT to sort of develop a plan or develop a scope of what we need to study in terms of traffic volumes and intersections. So, obviously, on the screen, you can see that figure that shows those intersections that we were focused on, on the Meben Oaks corridor, as well as Sweet Gum Way down there where we're going to have some back ends of the city, and they lay those out to us. We go out and collect traffic data, project those to the future year of what the developer is anticipating in terms of build-out timeframe. In doing so, we take into account traditional background growth rate in the area, as well as any other developments that are planned or approved in the area. So, we've got all that traffic lumped in, sets us a sort of a base level scenario for us to go by, also include any planned improvements from NC DOT, as you see with the state transportation improvements on Meben Oaks. Then what we do is generate traffic for the proposed development based on their land uses. Each land use sort of generates its own level of traffic, and that's all sort of projected based on national industry averages. So, when we throw that traffic on our study intersections on our corridor, get a level of service, and sort of compare that between what we call the no-build, which is our base-level conditions, and the build conditions, which is those intersections with our development traffic included, take a comparison, and that's what we start to look at where we might need some improvements. And obviously, that's sort of what we landed on with the signalized intersection for the side access, as well as some turn lanes there. And then, as was mentioned before, looking at a coordinated timing plan for all those intersections along Meben Oaks Road. And we feel with those improvements and then as well as the state improvements that are supposed to be finished, I believe, within the year, that that's going to really help the traffic progression along Meben Oaks, along the frontage of the site, and then all the way up through I-40. And as Aiden said, hear for more technical questions or more specific questions related to the traffic impact as well.
So, we've talked about some technical aspects. We've talked about the land use plan and why we were drawn to this site to begin with. But, of course, the task before you is a little bit more nuanced than that, not just any land use that meets those features that I've discussed is going to pass muster. So, why this project and why do we feel like it warrants this change in zoning and the allowance to go forward here in Meben? And I want to submit to you, and I hope you'll agree, that this is a new and exciting and very next step forward in housing optionality and product here in Meben. Yes, you have multifamily. Yes, you have some apartments. However, Meben now, as it's growing, as it's growing in what we're seeing more and more in the multifamily realm of renters, it's a wider net than it used to be. It used to be homeownership, homeownership. Now, we see a lot more people renting at various stages of life for all kinds of reasons, and that means people who still want a really nice community that they can call home, that has a sense of place to it, where they can invite folks over, where they can be proud and have a sense of place. And so, we feel like this project really does provide that. Not only is it in a fantastic location, as we've talked about, it's near things that people want to be near to, it's also logistically a good location. You've got folks that can get on the interstate and go east or west or to various parts of the city very easily. So, from a location standpoint, it meets that bar, and then you've got Evolve as the developer and builder here that really does bring a top-of-market community. These folks develop all over the Carolinas, and they bring products that you see here are modern, they're fully amenitized. You see here the more sort of pseudo-urban style that we frankly haven't seen in Meben yet. We have a lot of very spread-out, more campus-like apartments where you kind of have to drive to the clubhouse or drive to get your mail. Here, we have more of a pseudo-urban, as I've said, which makes sense in this location. It's more compact, it's more about walkability and making use of the resources that we have. So, we wanted to put something here that really created a nice gateway into this corridor of Meben, greeted folks off the interstate, greeted folks coming in from the south, and really provided that sense of arrival for people coming through the neighborhood and people living here. So, you see a lot of glazing, you see the flat roofs, you see the orientation around an interior courtyard where the amenities are focused instead of, like I said, sort of a separate pool that you would drive and park at. Really create that nice cohesive, compact type of home environment. Moving on to the single-family, this would also be a part of Evolve. So, this isn't something where they build the apartments and then move on and see what transpires on the other side. So, what that means is that they are a stakeholder in this. They also want to make sure that the single-family part of this project is just as thriving and just as successful as the multifamily part. So, of course, these are illustrative, but we did want to be transparent and just provide some idea of what we're looking at here, and so we wanted to be thoughtful to the vernacular of Almonds County in Meben. So, you see sort of the evocation of a farmhouse type of architecture here with the porches and the gabling. You see square footages that are very much in keeping with the neighboring properties so that you are insured of harmonious property values and, you know, compatibility between the neighborhoods. And you see several different iterations of that to create a nice versatile neighborhood streetscape. We did, as Aiden mentioned, have some neighborhood outreach. We sent out a letter back in April and held a Zoom meeting on April 17th. We had approximately 25 to 30 participants, had some good discussion, and I'll point out a couple tangible things from that discussion. We talked about the fact that these single-family homes, we heard from our neighbors, why don't they have their own play area or community gathering spot so nobody gets confused and walks over into Manorfield or Arbor Creek and uses their community gathering spots? So, we said, that's a great point, and we've added that. So, that gathering community area that you saw on our concept plan, oops, there on the southern end, just below the roundabout, that was an update from that feedback. We also heard about that stop condition that Aiden mentioned, that, you know, it was important for people, as they made that transition, for that flow of traffic to be properly managed. So, we did go back and look at that and where the stop signs currently were existing. We actually heard anecdotally that some may be missing, so we've made notes on that and how to best make sure that we're not creating, you know, inefficient stopping or not enough stopping. So, that was good feedback. We also heard a lot about the connectivity, of course. This really is a function of your not only development regulations, but also your comp plan connectivity standards. So, this is really one that we didn't have any, we really didn't have any leeway on. However, we do feel like it's well-managed, not only with the micromanaging with the stop condition, but also with the traffic calming along Broadwood Acres and with the signalization, of course, where we reach Meben Oaks Road. That's really going to create the most viable, the most convenient, and the most desirable way in and out of this neighborhood is going to be at Meben Oaks Road at that signalization. So, we were happy to provide that with our traffic study feedback. Let's see. I think we've gone through all the renderings here. So, with that, I do want to open it up for questions and discussion. Of course, all of our team is here. We're excited about this. We think we've, you know, we were careful to be intentional, not only through your policy and planning guidance, but also through the feedback that we heard from this board and from the neighbors via the benefit we gained from watching the last developer go through this. So, not everything can change because there were some good bones here. You know, we worked, you saw in your staff report, six times through the TRC process, and your staff does a fantastic job of, you know, not only leading us through the ordinance, but implementing the policy goals and directives that have been adopted by the city. So, we feel thankful for their guidance, and we do, of course, have their recommendation for staff support. We do meet the consistency of the comp plan guidance, and we hope to gain your support as well, and we look forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you. I'll see if you have questions before I walk away, I guess.
Do we have questions? Let's go first, or?
I want to open it up to the public first.
I think we get our questions, then we do your public comments. Or do you want to do public comment first?
I have a couple of questions about the traffic study. As a part of that, I know you did a lot of looking at Meben Oaks Road, but did you spend much time looking at the traffic impact it's going to have on Old Hillsborough Road as people are utilizing those neighborhoods to cut through, especially folks getting their kids to the elementary school and that intersection that's already going to be facing some additional challenges with some other developments that are coming in?
So, we did look at sort of the back neighborhood connections, but we were not required by NC DOT or the city to go further west because we think the majority of the traffic is going to be centered around the Meben Oaks Road. You will have some folks that are going out that way towards the schools, but we think the majority of the traffic is going to be taken, you know, going to be utilizing what's most efficient, and that's to get out to Meben Oaks Road through the signal and out to the interchange that way.
Some people probably argue with you about whether that's most efficient or not, driving on Meben Oaks Road, especially if you're headed west, because folks are going to attempt to bypass all that and go straight out to the Trolleywood Road exit, depending on what happens at that exit. But I see there's an opportunity that a lot of that traffic is going to cut right back through those neighborhoods and come out onto Old Hillsborough and head that way so they can get off on that Trolleywood Road exit to head west rather than going down Meben Oaks. Meben Oaks is very congested most hours of the day, and I think even with the DOT improvements that we're seeing, I don't know how that's going to, we'll see how much that helps. It also is now so full of red lights, and you guys are adding another one, which will help with getting in and out of your property, but depending on how they're cycled, I have some concern about, you know, it's every quarter of a mile, we've got a different red light. So, I do think that's something that needs to be maybe looked at further in your traffic impact discussions, what you anticipate that's going to look like as far as people driving through these other neighborhoods and getting out onto Old Hillsborough.
If I may, before Chase might want to dig into some more of that, you're spot-on with your discussion points here, and I want to expand a little bit. Chase mentioned the scoping process.
Can you talk to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. Chase mentioned the scoping process that the traffic study goes through. So, when he says, you know, "we think this," that's not just us in a vacuum, you know, the developers and, you know, the expert that we bring to the table. As you all know, that scoping meeting happens with the city and it happens with the DOT. So, that's how the determination of what intersections to study and how far out to look at goes. You know, Ashley and Rachel provide us data on, hey, we just approved this. You need to make sure that's in your background. So, there is a much more holistic, you know, it's not just in a vacuum where somebody on our team decides. So, I do want to let you know that you're absolutely right, you know, the breadth of what needs to be looked at is important, and I want to assure you that not only does that scoping cover that, but then as an additional checkpoint in Meben, you guys actually have a third-party review that happens for your traffic studies. So, our traffic study also went through that process, and that's what brings back the, you know, the final recommended improvements that, you know, the developer has to agree to. And again, you're spot-on, the traffic signalization synchronicity is a big deal. That was the reason that we didn't initially, you know, put in for the traffic signal because we weren't sure NC DOT had raised that concern. Doesn't make sense to put another signal here. So, they wanted to see that data and look at it before they just said, yeah, put one in. So, they did ultimately decide that we needed it because, again, as we saw from the small area plan, this is an important connection of Broadwood Acres. That's going to be a bigger point than just our development or whatever development goes here. So, they did want that signalization for that long-term connectivity, but they also said you need to go back and fix the synchronization. So, I'm sure Chase can dig into more of what that looks like or what that means, but exactly what you said, it can't just be willy-nilly, lights are going off on their own independent cycles. It has to be a corridor plan so that you get, you know, enough greens to keep it moving and everybody stopping at the right times, which is a facet and discipline of traffic engineering that fortunately we have people who know how to do that. And your engineers and the state's engineers flagged that and said, you got to fix that if we're going to add a light here.
I also have some questions about the open space requirements and the lack of open space that you guys are offering in this plan.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that according, it looks like here you're required to offer 11.83 acres of public recreation, 5.51 of private recreation, and 7.34 of open space, and it looks like you're offering 1.77 acres of private, and then you're asking to use the seven and a half or so acres of property that you've allocated to the city as the remainder. So, that just seems like a really small amount of open space.
Right. And again, this is about trying to achieve a balance of all the various objectives and proper, you know, utilization of the asset that we have, which is this, you know, the confines of this assemblage. What's the best way to most further, you know, with this plan? So, we felt like, I kind of touched on this, in the multifamily community, we do have a very concentrated, highly amenitized package. You know, no, it's not sprawling to where it really accumulates a lot of acreage totals, but I think that it has a lot of bang to where it, it really accumulates a lot of acreage totals, but I think that it, it has a lot of bang for its buck, if you will, in what, in what is being offered and what we do have. We have the courtyard pool amenity. We have two different dog parks, grilling stations. Frank and John, correct me if I'm forgetting anything, but it, it's a very intrinsic sort of community-based package of, of amenities that we, as, as leaders in the industry, that we know residents use and like and look for when they're looking for an apartment home at this level of the market. So we wanted to be true to that and, and give residents what it is that they're looking for. For the single family, we only have 96 homes here, so that's not, you know, one of the big neighborhoods that would support a big community pool or that sort of thing. You can imagine what the HOA dues would be on just 96 lots to support that. But we do have, we did, like I said, we did want to offer some community gathering space that would be above and beyond just folks' private backyards for that sense of community and public recreation. But then, you know, yes, the city has great standards, you know, certainly a leader among municipalities in your recreation requirements, but also, you know, the city also has to be looking for opportunities to meet other ways to serve its residents and to serve its needs as you grow. And so we felt like this, this would be an opportunity. In discussions through TRC, it felt like a better utilization of that land rather than just keeping those 7.43 acres open as open space would be to say, hey, you know, would this be a good, a good dedication for you guys to utilize for some of your growth needs? So we, we looked at it as a way to achieve a balance. If, if you think of all the ways that Meben, as a city, looks to provide a quality of life for its residents, open space is definitely important and recreation is high up on that list. But so is the provision of, you know, goods and services in the way of fire and police protection and.
Well, and that's a little bit of my concern, is that on your renderings, that's a nice green space. But I don't anticipate that that's going to remain a nice green space when the city, if the city utilizes it for one of their purposes. I know that none of that's been decided yet, but we've got a, a large neighborhood and, and a lot of folks that are going to be concentrated here, and they're really, there's a lot of space for the folks living in the multifamily, or not a lot of space, but there are amenities for the people living in the multifamily. We don't have a park area. We don't have a large play area for these kids in this, in this single-family area to come and gather. And so that is a concern to me. We set up these open space requirements as part of our comprehensive land plan that we want these open space requirements. We want people to have more green space in their neighborhoods, and this is not really offering that. So, so that would be my concern.
I, I do understand, and I, I, you know, certainly realize that this is all a lot of balancing of trade-offs. And so I understand you're in the position to, you know, be the arbiter of that. And so I, I know that it's a lot. And I certainly do want to emphasize that, you know, that is why, you know, we included in our presentation that it was a dedication in Lou, and, and our site plan is labeled with dedication for future city use to include, but not limited to. So we wanted to be very transparent that, no, we're not, we're not calling this green space.
Yeah.
So I, I do appreciate your comment and, you know, putting it out there so everyone understands what it is and what it isn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do just want to clarify, they're providing 1.77 acres of private recreation and then 7.08 acres of open space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
That is an important clarification. Thank you.
Can you talk about the variances and why you can't fit in the current ordinances and why you need those variances?
Oh, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. The one variance that we asked for was building height. And we actually asked for that early on. And as we've learned more about the, the final product style that we went, we showed the renderings of, we actually don't think we're going to need that specifically. We can fit our building in 50 feet. We still wanted to keep it in our application just for a little bit of flexibility cushion. And I'll tell you why. You saw the flat roofs. They include a parapet wall that hides the HVAC equipment, which of course is a nice aesthetic design feature. And your, your, the way your ordinance reads is it measures the height requirement to the top of the roof. Well, our architect tells us that a parapet wall is not a roof. So we weren't sure how that would end up playing out. And so we wanted to just go ahead and keep that 60-feet request for a little bit of flexibility to, you know, properly finish off those parapet walls, perhaps have a little bit of ability. You see how there's varying levels there, and it has the little covering there on the, on the, my, my left, how it's a little higher than the rest. So we wanted the ability to kind of have some variability to the roof line. So that, that's why we kept that request in there. It's, it's not a, we're not exceeding it in actual floor space of the four stories. And, and Aiden, you might have more understanding and clarity to add to that, but we did talk with the architect about that today, and he assured us that the actual building itself to the roof, as, as he is an architect, would term a roof is 50 feet. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I could definitely add to that. When we first started, I think they were looking at like A-frame roofs, kind of like hip roofs, that sort of thing. But, but the flat roof concept came back a little later, and, and that condition, really, we just never kind of massaged that condition just a little bit. But the architect thinks he can get it in with parapet walls at 50 feet, but he's, he, he likes to have a little bit of flexibility. So I really don't know. I mean, if you say, you know, no to the condition at 50 feet, we could probably make it work, you think is what we're saying. So, but he, he would like to have a little bit of a flexibility there, I guess. So, and actually, I don't, with the condition, the parapet walls, would that be included in roof height, or would that, would that be part of the, the structure since, would that be the condition there?
I would need to look at our exact definition, but we can make it a condition that the roof height is to this point, and then the parapet would extend above that if we have concern.
Okay. Sounds good.
May I ask a question? Are you having elevators in these four-story buildings? Or are they all stairs?
Yes, sir. They are elevated. And again, that, that is a feature that is, is important just to bring the level of, of community and market product that we're looking to do. And I actually failed to invite Mr. Ford to, he might want to address just a little bit about Evolve's excited, excitement to be here and, and why they've, you know, moved forward on this project up to now. Do you want to?
Good evening. My name is Frank Ford. My address is 2918 Martinsville Road in Greensboro. We are excited about this project. We're excited about Meben. We're a local developer. We're, we're local to Greensboro. We do have a Wilmington office, and our Wilmington office has become and, and does concentrate on our single-family home aspect of it. So for us, this development is a great transition for, for kind of Greensboro and Wilmington getting together, if you will. But, you know, I think it makes all the sense that, that Amanda so eloquently talked about. I think we transition beautifully from your entirely correct, a fairly busy Meben Oaks Road. I drove on Meben Oaks Road here tonight. I will tell you that, like all construction, it's not pretty when it's happening. I, I really think at some point in the not-too-distant future, Meben Oaks is going to be a beautiful street with new pavement, and all the cones will be gone, and it'll work really well. But getting to that point i- is not fun or enjoyable or certainly pretty. Unlike a lot of our projects, we kind of took this project over, and it kind of goes to your open space question or, or comment. And that is, is that we would love to have gotten a blank canvas here and, and kind of worked with staff on what we thought should be done or could be done here. We kind of inherited this project a little bit. But I think what we bring to the table now, as opposed to our prior friends, for lack of a better term, who had this previously and were here before you guys previously, and ladies, excuse me, is I think that we're here now because we can do this. We, we can do it well. I think the pictures speak for themselves. I think we'll transition really well from Meben Oaks back to the neighborhood. I understand and appreciate your traffic concerns. We listened, I think, to a lot of the people who were here tonight during our neighborhood meeting about the traffic concerns. I think that, and I'm not from Meben, so I understand how traffic evolves, and it doesn't necessarily follow, with no offense to Mr. Smith, traffic patterns or, or kind of stuff. But I do think from a cut-through perspective, and I'm sure I'm going to mess this up, but if you look at our plan, if you're going to cut through this development to go to the Arbor Creek Development to get out to Hillsborough Road, as I think you had mentioned, you'd be coming down Meben Oaks Road, and you'd take either a right or a left onto Broadwood.
Leaving this development and going out that way, more so than I am people coming off of Meben Oaks Road and using it as a cut-through. I was thinking more of the families that are living here.
Sure. And, and I think my comments are the same. What you, what you'd have to do if you were going to cut through our neighborhood is you'd have to go through a traffic calming situation, up to a traffic circle, take a, or go all the way around the traffic circle, come through the traffic circle, take a right-hand turn, go into a left-hand turn. And the, our neighbors or our people are doing the same thing. You can't just, you know, there's not a Broadmore Acres in Arbor Creek. You're, you're going to have to go and take a right. You're going to have to make a stop sign. You're going to have to take a left. I think at the end of the day, when you're leaving our neighborhood and you're going down Hillsborough Street, it's going to be a lot easier for you to take a right-hand turn, a signalized intersection, and then another right-hand turn on Old Hillsborough Road than to get there, than to cut through that neighborhood. And, and I understand and appreciate that, that, you know, again, fortunately or unfortunately, I think we may see more people from Arbor Creek going through our neighborhood than we'll see people from our neighborhood going through theirs. Now, I understand that, but we, we really don't know, and we'll, we'll see. But I just don't believe that that is in of itself an easy way to get, get through.
I do still think it's going to, to increase the traffic on Old Hillsborough Road, and that's why I was concerned about that, that further signal at Old Hillsborough and with the school traffic, and if that had been looked at in the, in the study, just because I know that is a, that is a congestion area now, that, that Hillsborough Road and Old Hillsborough Road and 119 intersection, it gets very congested. And, and, you know, it's going to only get more congested as we have some other neighborhoods that are coming. So I didn't know if that had been a part of the study and if there was any further conversations that were, had regarding this, you know, just as an addition on to some of that.
And I'll let Mr. Smee, I'm sorry. I'll let Mr. Smith speak to that. But we are being tasked with and asked for by NC DOT and, and Meben Transportation to adjust the signalization of all those lights, and I believe including the light at Old Hillsborough and Meben Oaks Road. So.
But not Old Hillsborough and 119. You've not gone up that far?
No, no, ma'am.
Yes, too far out of your scope. Okay.
Yep. And I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're taking questions here. We'll get you in a second.
We'll get you in a second. Okay.
All right. So we, we're not a public hearing, but we will want to hear everyone's questions and comments. If you want to come along the side here and get in line, and when you come up, just state your name, address, and try to limit it to two to three minutes. Go from there, so.
My name is Louise Bryan. I live at 1301 Yellow Wood Drive in Meben. I live in Manor Field, which is Sweet Gum, the majority of Sweet Gum Road is in Manor Field. Y'all keep talking about Arbor Creek. I'm just going to be blunt because that's how I roll. You're going to ruin our neighborhood if this goes through because Meben Oaks Road is a disaster. And it, the, the, I'm very thankful for the new construction, but it's not going to alleviate the problem. The lights aren't timed, and I, I don't need to go into that for, for people that, that live in Meben. If, if you live south of the freeway, like we all do, it, it's, it's, it's horrible right now. So it's just going to get worse. Anyway, so my first question is, why attach this high-density project to our single-family home neighborhood? I moved to a single-home family neighborhood for a reason. I grew up in a city. I don't want to live in a city. And, you know, there've been things said tonight like pseudo-urban style. Are, are we trying to make Meben an, an urban place? I hope not, but that seems to be what's happening. I, I, I have so many concerns about what's happened to, to Meben in terms of basically developing on every piece of open property. So I would like to know what the price point of the apartments would be?
So to make this an efficient public hearing, the developer will gather questions and respond at the end.
I'm sorry, what?
They're going to answer the question.
To make it efficient.
All right. So what are the, what's the price point of the apartments? Who's going to maintain the entrance from this proposed development into our neighborhood? And what recourse do we have if it's not maintained? We currently have a problem within our neighborhood with the people living there, not all of them, obviously, but it's a 25-mile-per-hour zone. I have two dogs that I walk multiple times during the day. There are no crosswalks. So nobody stops. And so now you're going to add all this traffic. So my question is, how is that going to be mitigated? How are you going to enforce the 25-mile-per-hour zone, both within our existing neighborhood and this new neighborhood? And what's to keep the, there's been a lot of emphasis tonight on the, you know, single-family homes is what's going to butt up to our neighborhood, but what's to keep the apartment dwellers, like you brought up, from using Sweet Gum as an ingress to the neighborhood? The way Sweet Gum is laid out now, there is no stop sign on it. So you come into Sweet Gum off Hillsborough, Old, Old Hillsborough Road, and you can speed down it to the end of that cul-de-sac. You know, I watched a dog get killed because somebody was going 45 miles an hour on, on that. And now you're going to bring, you know, hundreds of more vehicles. Also, I'd like to know who Meben Housing LLC is. There's no info on them on the internet. I'd also like to know who the developer of this property is going to be. Some of us that live in the neighborhood had very bad experiences with the developer of our neighborhood. He did not do certain things that he was supposed to do. And I, I won't go into the details of that, but basically, the city of Meben had a lean on him, which they did not hold back. And property owners lost some of their backyard because of him changing the development. So that's my other question, is if this development were to be approved, how do we, going forward, are changes allowed to be made willy-nilly? Because that's what happened in our neighborhood. And then if this is approved, are we going to, I, I saw that the, the water is going to tie in to Longleaf Pine. So is our neighborhood now going to become a construction zone? We already went through that when our neighborhood was being built, which we understood because our neighborhood was being built. But we don't, our roads are already in poor shape. They're not, they haven't been maintained well. And so to have construction vehicles coming in and out for a few years is not great. Speaking to the green space.
You got, you got about 30 seconds.
Okay. There's no, there's no parks on, on this side of the freeway in Meben. There's nothing, nothing for us. So I still have more, but I'll, I'll yield.
Thank you. Next.
So I live on 975 Sweet Gum Way. So it's.
Your name, please.
And your name? My name is Ashley, Abashan.
Address?
975 Sweet Gum Way. So I live just, I'm on the west side. Basically, we'll be backing up to the retention pond. That's proposed there. So many concerns, but my first concern is, what has been talked about a lot is just the high density. So to, first in context, which you all may remember from before, last time, this was proposed to be developed. The proposal was for 257 units. This new proposal is for 416. So last time, it got denied because of the high density, I believe. This time, they're proposing over 150 more. So just leaving that there. It already takes me 10 minutes to go 2.3 miles to Walgreens on the other side of the highway. I also go around Meben Oaks Road. I take the backroads. I go down Rock Quarry Road to go to the library, to go to the parks downtown, to go to downtown. If this gets approved and there's 416, not just people, so double that, triple that, whatever. I will probably have to take some of my business to Graham. It'll be just as efficient to go to Graham to get dinner, to go grocery shopping, whatever it may be, if it's going to take me 15 minutes to get to where I need to go in Meben, which is two miles away. The other, the other thing that I was going to suggest, too, is just. The other, the other thing that I was gonna suggest too is just that we are zoned R12 in our neighborhood. And the proposal is to be rezoned to R6, I believe.
R8.
R8, okay. So my husband and I are kind of, you know, when we, when we bought this house, we knew that there was a potential for it to be built on behind, behind us. So, and we're not completely opposed to that. You know, we, we know that that is a possibility. Uh, Meben is growing. But I would propose that we stick with what we're doing, what we've done in Arbor Creek, and rezone to R12 and have it throughout. Instead of a, why do we have to have the apartment complex with 300-plus units when we can make the whole property, single-family homes? I would obviously still love to just have my backyard be woods. I love looking out in my backyard, and it's just woods. It's beautiful. But I'm not naive, you know, things may be happening. And so my proposal would just be for it to be single-family homes. It would help with the density, the traffic. It would make it much more neighborhood-friendly with our neighborhood. And then also, because I back up to the retention pond that's proposed there, there was a mentioning of a buffer that they're going to add. While I appreciate that there's a buffer in mind, uh, the proposed buffer, I believe, is 20 feet. And when I asked if, you know, what would happen around that area, they said that all the trees would likely need to be cut down, which is very sad to me. We have about six dogwood trees in my, right behind our fence.
You got about 30 seconds.
So for me to go from looking in the woods to looking at a retention pond and directly into someone else's, you know, house, and it's, you know, it's a lot different for me. So I would request that if this does happen, that you all would require trees to be left or significant, like green giants, to be planted, or whatever it may be, just to... Because unfortunately, when our neighborhood was built, that was not required of our builder. You know, we're, I'm sad now that I know that my fence goes directly to my, to my line, my property line. I would have enjoyed if you all or whoever would be the required people to require that, would have required a buffer. I'd much rather have definitely a, you know, a green buffer than no opportunity for that, so.
You got 30 seconds.
I think that's, those are my main points. You know, the other concern is just, yes, the people walking down into our neighborhood using our HOA amenities. But I also have two children. They're 13 months old and three years old, and I worry about their, their safety as far as with the traffic increase, kind of what you mentioned. Very concerned about people, um, coming through our neighborhood and speeding, just having more cars. And I think someone mentioned earlier that they would have to take a bunch of turns, but the people in the back, the single-family homes would have to take zero turns to get into our neighborhood. They have to go through one-stop light, so, um, that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Yep, next up.
Hey, how's it going? My name's Ray Oliver. Uh, I live at 909 Sugar Street Drive. I'm the HOA president in the Arbor Creek Manor Field neighborhood. So first off, I would like to say, in an ideal world, we would like this not to connect to our neighborhood. But I understand that might not be possible because of how Meben wants to do the city. But if you look at it, it's really two projects, right? So you've got that traffic circle and all of the apartments and all of the high-retail stuff. I understand why that would want to be zoned to R8. But the backside, if their plan is to leave it residential, why not leave that either at R20 or make it R12? Uh, and the reason I say that is, in our neighborhood, we had three different developers. That's, that backside is phase four. Who's to say that you guys are gonna be doing it in phase four? And then to, to go through something that came up earlier in this meeting, uh, when you were looking at the other property, one of you said, "But it was already retail." So then we run into the spot of, "This is now rezoned. There could be a new board." And they're like, "Oh, well, it's already rezoned for multifamily." As far as, and I appreciate them taking into account, um, and adding that little itty-bitty space of, uh, green space and area, but, um, so our neighborhood only has.
It's 240 houses.
Kind of amenities. There is a gazebo that we use for a lot of neighborhood functions. And then we have a, um, a, a park. My job as the HOA president is keep our dues as low as possible. And that is 90 homes that have nothing. Like their kids, and I, I know this man says that, oh, well, I think at the meeting he said that they would even want to use the stuff, the, the playground and the dog park and all that stuff. But if you were to take Meben or Old Hillsborough from where that starts to that other stuff, it's a half a mile. It's our playground, it's a quarter of a mile. And even looking at this, like I said, it's two separate entities. I think it's an Amanda. So she described it as that road, Broadword, Broad Acres, whatever. She described it as a boulevard. No one's gonna, like, when you're walking your neighborhood, all that stuff is gonna be separate. You might walk there to get to, uh, to the, to Walmart and all that stuff, but that is not neighborhood. That is all gonna be high-density. People are not gonna walk that way. They're gonna walk their neighborhood, just like we walk our neighborhood. They're gonna come through, they're gonna see all of our amenities, they're gonna use it, it's gonna put a strain on our stuff. Things will get broken, and we have to pay for it, which means higher dues for us. And they have nothing. If, if it has to connect, they should have some space. They need a park. They can have that thing up front, but nobody's gonna go to that. Like, there's, not that, there's more houses on the backside than up near that little green area that they have. And, and it's just, it's gonna put a strain on our, our stuff.
About 30 seconds.
All right. Uh, so, lastly, Meben Oaks Road. Really, we don't know what the impact of all the construction is gonna be there. Uh, I know they did a lot of studies, engineering and all this other stuff, but those are projections. They didn't go to Old Hillsborough, uh, because they didn't have to. It would make more sense to wait to see how this stuff is gonna play out before doing it. At one point, Old Hillsborough was supposed to be four lanes when they were adding that, um, development that went across from us, but that got scrapped. And as far as engineers, I went to college with a bunch of engineers, and they get created on a curve. So it's projected. Remember that.
Next.
Try to keep it to two minutes.
Good evening. Brenda Buchanan, 1143 Dartmouth Drive in Meben. And I live off of Old Hillsborough Road. And I have a concern about the traffic already. I just moved here in April. Moved here with my son, and I'm representing him tonight in that sense. And I live closer to, uh, 119. Right now, my grandson rides the bus. But if you guys agree to this, then the traffic on Old Hillsborough Road is going to be so much worse than it already is. And when you turn out onto 119 to get to Hoffield's Middle School, the line is parents. The line is down the road. So I don't know about the studies, the traffic studies that were done, but we might need to go back and take another look. And as far, and I don't mean that sarcastically, I mean that straightforward. And, um, as far as the traffic coming down Old Hillsborough, it's already enough. Meben Oaks Road, I go that way, I go the back way, um, back to Morrisville, to church on Meben Oaks Road. I don't even try to go across. I don't go to Wendy's and Sheetz and, no. It's just too much. And I'm not talking about just now with the construction. It was too much before. It's just too much. So I don't, I don't have a disagreement with, uh, the development per se. I don't have a disagreement with apartment homes. Everybody needs to have a wonderful place to live, however the traffic poses a problem. And I just believe that, as these homeowners are saying, bringing the extra, uh, density in is going to affect or have a great impact on them and the way that they live right now. The, um, development I live in, um, it's been five years. We're still waiting for that, for the street to be paved that last time.
Yeah, about 30 seconds.
And the pool just opened, and you could already see people coming in who don't live there. So this will have a great impact on people. But please take into account the traffic and the young people. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Has it been announced by DOT what will be improved on Meben Oaks all the way to the Old Hillsborough interchange? Will it be four lanes?
The funded improvements end about the location of this site. It does not continue to Old Hillsborough.
The funded improvements.
What's being currently constructed.
Right. Will, will go to this site? Will it go to the fire department?
Um, at the Duke Medical Mod Wash area.
It only goes there? But that's not gonna, well, okay. I'll keep my opinion about where that's.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Preeti White. I live at 965 Sweet Gumway. So I'm the last property that abuts in this neighborhood on the west side. So I have three main concerns. Obviously, we talked about traffic. I don't care about Meben Oaks Road. I'm not gonna go out there. I go down Trollingwood. I don't care if I'm going east or west. I go down Trollingwood. Because there's five traffic lights. Just imagine trying to get anywhere other than the Walgreens. So I don't go that way downtown. I take 119, the new way, or, like, Trollingwood. Two, public amenities on our section of town. Everything south of Meben, of the highway, there is not a single park, not a pool, not anything for the children. You have an elementary school, a middle school, and a new high school. And now we're talking about 500 families, because many of these homes are two-bedroom or more. So we're not assuming a single adults are living there. We're assuming children. And there's nothing to support the children of this town on that side of town. We have a park, which I love. I have a, an eight-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a four-year-old. They were born in that neighborhood. So I would like to be able to still do things with them. And as Ashley, my neighbor, said, I will go to Graham, because I go to Graham Regional Park. I go to downtown Graham because it's so much more accessible to me. With Magnolia Glen, the neighborhood across the street growing, Cambridge doubling in size coming down Jones Road, what is the support for Old Hillsborough? There is just, to get, to drop my children off at Audrey Garrett, to get out of the neighborhood without getting in a car crash because of crazy people going fast down Old Hillsborough, I've had more than one person flip me off because I took too long to turn right with my children. So really, can we just think about the infrastructure on the south side of the city before we start adding more homes? I want people to live here. I moved here 10 years ago. I grew up in Cary, when everyone loved to talk about Meben turning into Cary. So I lived through this, and I want to stay here, but I don't know if the community is gonna support my family to stay here much longer. So really, like, safety, traffic, and amenities for the children that you want to grow up in this town, because you have three of them here right now. And I would like them to graduate from this town. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles Stan Cotty. I live at 1034 Longleaf Pine Place, Meben. Good evening to all of you. I'm pretty much reiterating what everybody said. My big concern is the park. They don't have any, you know. I, my dues fees are gonna be raised to repair that park, our park. The other big thing is traffic. Now, I see on this or that, uh, it comes out onto Longleaf Pine. There is no stop signs. There's one facing the new development on Sweet Gum and Longleaf. Cars that bring their kids to school at Garrett, which is just in my neighborhood now, go flying up. There's nothing. There's no stop signs on Sweet Gum. So as soon as they come out of that neighborhood, and I'm gonna have to agree with Ms. Taylor, they will be going to the school. They will be going to the Honda plant. They will be going, uh, to Garrett's Elementary School, to the middle school, which you can't get that 119 when it's time to get in or out of that school. The new high school, I'm sure there's gonna be people that take, instead of using a bus, they're gonna use the car, so. The traffic is horrible. And I've called and I've had the Meben Police with radar. They've given people speeding tickets, and these are just residents that live there. Once you, you get somebody that's not in that neighborhood, it's going to go from bad to worse. The traffic conditions are gonna be absolutely. Anywhere. If they can put stop signs, speed tables, speed bumps. The town, I talked to with the front office, they said, "No, we can't do speed bumps because it messes the fire trucks." The fire department, which is on the Meben Oaks Road, they are gonna have to get bigger because that is a big development. I mean, it was turned down when it had 250 homes or whatever it was two years ago. I had this whole big thing, I read to you guys on Zoom. I've seen this, and obviously you know I'm not from here. I'm a Long Island person. I've seen this on Long Island, and it's, I'm not a dinosaur. I wanna see improvement. I, I have no problem with the development, but it has to be scaled down, and there has to be ways to control the traffic. My last point is, on Longleaf Pine alone, I mean, Ashley's right around the corner. I see her walking the door, uh, when I walk my dogs in the morning, she walks her kids. We must have 10, 15 houses with kids that are under eight years old. Then we have people like me with grandparents. I'm an old man, I don't have kids. That, you know, these kids, behind a bouncing ball comes a running kid, or the bicycle, or whatever. And these kids just go running out in the street without looking. These cars come down the street now at 40 miles an hour. I'm sorry, cannot stop to save a child's life. It's more safety between the fire department, the police coming in there, Old Hillsborough, trying to get out from Longleaf onto Old Hillsborough. It's a hill. There's traffic. You can't see it until the last minute you're pulling out. And it's the same with the other development and our development, and then the schools. And I'm sure I missed something that I wanted to say, but the big thing is the traffic. They will cut through. The people that live there will cut through. All right, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thanks. Next.
Hello, my name is Susan Huey, and I live on 3914 Long Meadow Drive in the Long Meadows subdivision. And as a retired teacher from Alman's Burlington Schools, I want to say I want to know the impact on schools. You're bringing a lot of more children into a school that is already a Title I school. You are not thinking about how we can support the education of all these new children. We have just added a high school that will be at capacity pretty quickly. And now you're going to add more to that school. The first thing we need to think about is the children in this community. You're taking away their green spaces. You're taking away their nature. You're taking away their, their homes as far as where they play. We have taken away the culture that was Meben. Meben is not a small town, and I understand that, but I don't approve of it. My husband's grandparents lived on Stagecoach, and we watched that. Sorry. We watched them tear down their house for development. We've watched Meben turn into a crime area. When we have a corridor coming right straight through us, and we're bringing more and more people to this area, the crime rate is going up. Alman's County already has the highest human trafficking for children and one of the highest crime rates that is growing. And we are not thinking about outside of our own personal space, which I do not want an apartment building facing my house. But we need to look past us, the future. Our children, where do you want kids to grow up? What kind of community are we creating that will allow children to feel safe? Not these roads, not stopping traffic patterns or protections because you didn't have to look at it. You should've gone above what you had to do and really look at what impacts are going to happen. The next thing is, I want to address water. We have built so much, and our water system is being suffered by this. We have few water supplies, but that is becoming limited. And if we continue. You are putting our water sources at risk. Along that comes with the aquatic nature, fishery, being able to use lakes as a recreation place, and being able to develop those areas into being more family-friendly.
Give about 30 seconds.
And like everybody else said, traffic is ridiculous. Now, this will only make it worse. I think we've really tried to cram a lot into a little space. I think we've really tried to cram a lot into a little space.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all. I'm Stan Kessler, nine twelve Palm Court in Meven. And we're pretty new to the community. And we loved it when we moved into our community. We did not get invited to the first meeting. We live in Manor Field, not Arbor Creek, which has the road that comes into the development. But Sweet Gumway runs right through Manor Field. And so we are directly affected by what's going on here. And I don't know why that is. The areas of interest that I would like to address, first of all, zero of the maps have the biggest development that's being built right now in front of us. And that's the Summit Church on the corner of Hills, Old Hillsborough Road and Meven Oaks Road. That's a big building. That's a big church. They already have a congregation of five hundred people. And it's gonna be a busy place, not just on Sundays, but they're gonna be busy. So that's gonna add to what's already going on here. And I wanted to point that out. I would like to know if these apartments are going to be low income in any way or subsidized in any way. I'd like to know that. I would strongly agree with those who have already spoken very eloquently that every one of those people in the single family residences is gonna drive on Sweet Gumway. Every one of them, without hesitation. They all will be doing it because it is the path of least resistance. And so that's gonna just be incredible. Now, in the Alamance News, they published a description of the project. And they said that the potential amenities included two playgrounds, two dog parks, grilling, a pool, and a clubhouse. And so far, all I've heard about is a clubhouse just for the apartments and one playground, which may be just for the apartments, maybe it's for the others. But I'm looking at that great big block in the very middle of the residential. And I would knock out four of those residences and put a park right in the middle of that to support the residence of that new addition. Because if you don't have a place for them to go, they're not gonna go long. They're gonna go short and, you know, would just be overrun. I noticed that, that the development is generously offering seven acres to the city to maintain or do whatever they want to with. In exchange for getting a pass on twenty-four acres, eleven point eight three acres of public recreation, seven point three four of private recreation. I'm sorry, five point five acres of public recreation, seven point three four of private, and the open space. So we'll let the city have seven acres to mow and take care of and do whatever they want to when they get around to it. As long as you give us a pass on the other twenty-four acres that we don't have to develop in accordance with the development ordinance. That doesn't sit well to change the development ordinance. You know, they talk about walkability. Walkability means stackability. They're stacking up so many people in these so many apartments that all they can do is walk someplace. And we're defining high density. Now, if we took the apartments out of the equation and made use of the land for our single have a flow, provided it gave open spaces and parks and facility. But the present plan is just a plan for the south end of town being overrun and the traffic just being a nightmare. So, you know, it really bears strong consideration. If we thought it was a hard sell before, I think it's even harder now.
Next.
Good evening. I'm Don Windsor. I live at forty-two fifty-three Old Hillsborough Road. Last two houses on the Alamance County side. Orange County line is on my property right in front of the Meadows that's been built. This December, I'll be eighty years old. Lord let me live that long. I've seen a lot of changes in Meven. There was a time when I knew practically everybody in Meven. There was a time I knew everybody was on the board. I don't know anybody except maybe this one guy right here. But time changes, people change, we move on. I've been blessed to have the years that I've had, but I've seen so many changes. There was a time I could walk from Old Hillsborough Road all the way to Walgreens and not see five cars on the road. Now it's a hundred to get to Walgreens from my house. Since they put the new intersection in, the new stoplights and all, our Old Hillsborough Road and Meven Oaks, it is terrible the way the traffic comes through there. If they're coming from Hall Fields to my direction and go into Orange County, they're running sixty mile hours sometimes because I've sat there and watched some of them. And you could just about tell they're running sixty mile hours, especially when they come by my house. You cross the little bridge on the first house on the right there. And they come by and it's turned out to be a drag strip through there. It is terrible. And the speed limit signs, it needs different speed limit signs there. You get over to the Wilson Road over there and it's fifty-five one way going through the intersection. You come back the other way, it's forty-five going through the intersection. It's all messed up. That speed limit needs to be lowered, especially since they put the development in front of me. And I think, what is it, three or four hundred houses, about three hundred or some houses in there, and they still building more. They've opening up the new land, the last stage of it. Now they've started today, I think, developing it. And, you know, if you go on east on our Old Hillsborough Road, there's four more properties out there. It's filled full of houses now. And you go back toward Hall Fields, what is it, seven hundred homes over there? Before you get to the school, back to the left, down where Buck Kelly's old store used to be, it's seven hundred back in there. And we're just running the place over with people in here. And you try to come up Meven Oaks Road, it's a disaster to come up through there. If a man had an emergency, I don't know if somebody's gonna have to help him if he gets through there because I know the development, all the landscaping that's been going on and the new highway widening and all that. But if it was, if it was ten lanes through there, it's still gonna be a problem with all the people that's moved in here. Can anybody tell me what the population of Meven is right now?
It's at or just above twenty thousand.
It's above twenty thousand?
It's around twenty thousand. I don't know if it's above yet.
We don't know what it is.
It's, the twenty twenty census had us close to eighteen thousand. We, of course, have grown since then. We have permit data that I've looked at and I would estimate we're at or above twenty thousand.
I don't know. It looks to me like we're overgrowing our means here. I've always been proud to say I was from Meven from when I was a teenager growing up. I've lived here all my life. And I can't say that I'm proud of it anymore because we need a steakhouse, place to go eat. There's no decent place in Meven to even go out and eat. Not now. And it looks like we're going after more and more apartments and more and more housing, people coming in from up north, you know. I understand that, but we need places to eat. Everybody, if you go eating where you gotta go to Greensboro, Berlins, or where?
You got about thirty seconds.
Okay. I appreciate it. Like I said, I don't know. I wish they could get the situation straightened out far as the traffic. That's the disaster area. Especially as you get older, you hate to drive through it. Thank you so much.
Come on in, Doc.
Hey, how are you? My name is Brian Dixon. I live in the Long Meadows subdivision. I've lived there since two thousand one.
Can you state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-nine oh five Long Meadow Drive. I've lived there since two thousand one, before there was anything even on that side of the interstate. I mean, technically, we're still, I guess, considered in the county, just in our neighborhood. I won't beat up on the traffic because I think that's been clearly explained. It's horrible. You know, it seems like these developments, and no disrespect to these folks here, it looks like a fine development, just not for there. Like, Meven Oaks has been a quagmire since Tanger Outlets came. But, you know, Tanger Outlets, it's good for business. Out of state money or out of town money comes in. It's great. So I'm all for projects that improve the standard of living for current residents. You know, Meven's a great town. I mean, we don't have to change. We don't have, we shouldn't have to make waivers to, for developers to come and wanna build here. I mean, we're offering the product and they wanna come, so they should meet what, you know, what the city wants. You know, we bill ourselves as positively charming. Nothing about Meven Oaks Road right now is positively charming, you know. So I just, you know, just, I would ask that you guys take that into consideration when you make your decision, you know, to recommend to the council. If it's not gonna improve the lives of current residents, then we probably need to rethink it. And I think it's just gonna add to the frustrations that everybody living in that area is going through right now. You know, that might be a great development for like the one nineteen bypass, somewhere where there's all that open land and, and. Well, no, I'm just saying, we don't have room for it right now or we can't support it right now. Maybe in the future, when the infrastructure catches up. I mean, I think what they're doing, you know, widening the bridge over the interstate, I think that's gonna help. But I don't think it's nearly enough to, you know, absorb all of the, you know, the upcoming development. And again, that's not even counting the Orange County side going on the other side of Hillsborough, Old Hillsborough Road. Because, you know, subdivisions are going up there left and right as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, you got a question?
If I can just go ahead and get a question or two submitted.
Sure.
You're not as much to the developer, I think, as probably to the city. I'm wondering what is the origin of the developer's offer to give the seven point four acres that's there in the center of this development? Was that something they volunteered, literally voluntarily, or is that something the city asked for? And if so, why would it be asked for? I mean, I don't have a dog in the fight in terms of what goes there. But what is stated as possibly going there doesn't seem to me very likely. A police station, doubtful. We're looking, the city is looking already at putting a police station somewhere else. It's certainly in the fire station, since there's one around the corner. So I don't understand what the origin of leaving that green space, dedicating it to the city, for what purpose?
Questions?
We wouldn't know the answer to that, but if Ashley wants to try to give an answer to that, I don't know if you even know the answer to that. And if you don't, just simply say so.
So I've written down a few notes from the speakers. I'm just gonna go in order. So the first speaker had mentioned who would maintain the connection between the two developments. Those streets would be city maintained. The streets currently in Arbor Creek and Manor Field are city streets. For the most part, Manor Field does have some private streets, but Longleaf Pine Place would be a public right of way.
I think her interest too was in the, any signage and if there's gonna be a berm or anything, you know, for the entrance to the neighborhood, if somebody would be maintaining that, was the impression that I got from the question, if that's, yeah. And I think that would probably be the HOA based on what they said about the neighborhood.
And there was another question about if there would be any changes to the plan. As conditional rezoning, this is site specific. So if this gets approved, this is what has to be built. There could be some, but if there's anything related to the street network or how many homes or open space, et cetera, that would have to come back through Planning Board and City Council. There's also been discussion about what the developer is providing in terms of amenities. And I can let the developer speak on this as well, but there is a playground within the single family subdivision section that's proposed, which Rachel's got the laser pointer on her right now. There's another playground in the multifamily, as well as the other amenities that were listed, the pool, clubhouse, grilling, pavilion, and dog parks. Related to the scoping for the traffic analysis, we do work with DOT and consider DOT to be experts in the field when it comes to traffic studies. And they'll tell you that the percentage from this development going this direction, then hitting the intersection with one nineteen and Old Hillsborough is not gonna be significant enough to require this developer to make improvements at that location. The city and the state have to be very careful in terms of putting the burden on developers as to what types of improvements are to be made. So this development is making improvements according to where they're having most of the impact. So in terms of schools, I just would want to add that the city cannot speak to the school system. We invite the school system to participate in our technical review committee. They are aware of the projects that are coming through Meven and are likely planning for those projects. But the city does not fund where schools go. I understand the need to coordinate and consider development. And then the city notifies neighbors within three hundred feet of the properties proposed for rezoning. I know one speaker said he was not invited to receive a letter. So I just wanna clarify, if you're not within three hundred feet, you would not have received a letter. And I'll just add again that the developer is providing one point seven seven acres of private recreation. They're required to provide just over five. And then they are required to provide seven point three four acres of open space and they're providing seven point zero eight. So it's not a full waiver of those requirements. They're required to provide eleven acres of public recreation and that's where this dedication of the lot is coming into play. So that goes into Mr. Boni's question. When the development was first proposed and brought to Planning Board in November of twenty twenty, as was mentioned, some of the comments made by the Planning Board at that time when they recommended denial had to do with density. The city received a resubmital of the plan some months after it was voted for denial by Planning Board. And in that plan, they had reduced density and had proposed to include a land dedication. They were showing it as an undeveloped park. When the development changed hands, it's my understanding, it was before my time in terms of being in the position I'm in right now. So I was not part of the conversations that the city had interest in locating a police station somewhere in this general area. And this was a potential site, which is why it's listed as a possibility.
Was that not originally intended though for Meven Oaks Road, not internal?
I cannot speak to that. And the developer was probably more aware of those conversations than I was since I was in the room.
I don't know who wants to come up. Sarah wants to come up?
You gonna make a couple of quick comments? But we still have to have our discussion and.
So if you wanna respond to some of the public comments. Well, you could, you could respond to the comments that you've heard.
Yeah. I was just gonna respond to the comment about the green space in the middle that I think Ashley and I, I apologize for not calling you by your proper name. Ashley commented on and the gentleman commented on. As I had commented on previously, we somewhat took this over. And that is, is that the folks at Diamondback, I believe, was the name of the development who had come before us. And we didn't wipe their plan out and wipe out everything that was done by them and start all fresh. You know, perhaps we should have, perhaps.
However, we didn't do it over.
So that was a public park that was dedicated by the Diamondback folks to the city of Meven. And we didn't wanna take that away. So we left it in there. In between that time, Meven has addressed, perhaps it might not be a park, it may be another use that Meven would prefer. And we were fine with that. And we're fine with whether it's a park or whether it's a police station or whatever it is. We're fine with that. I do think that there were several statements made about the fact that nobody was gonna hold us or we weren't gonna follow the rules or how do we follow the rules. I know some people had said that they had some rather negative past experiences with developers. But I can tell you, what you're seeing here is what we're gonna do because you're gonna make us do it. And the staff is gonna make us do it. And that's what we're gonna do. That's what we do. And, and the staff is going to make us do it, and that's what we're going to do, that's what we do here, that's what we do everywhere. We, we follow the rules. And I understand and appreciate Ms. Taylor's comment. Perhaps in a perfect world, we would have gone out and studied Hillsborough Road, but again, we were following the rules. And as Ashley, I think eloquently pointed out, whether we like it or not, NC DOT controls a lot of, of what we do, and certainly what happens in Meben. As the gentleman asked, Meben Oaks Road is an NC DOT street, you know, we don't get to do it, and the city of Meben doesn't really get to determine what happens there, NC DOT does. And then finally on density, you know, I, I understand it's a pretty big dense area, but the single-family home area here encompasses about 32 acres. And if it was RM 12, which is what the adjacent neighborhood would be, that would allow us to put 129 units there, 129 single-family homes. So if, if you take the 32 acres and you divide it, you times it by 43, 560, and divide it by 12,000 square feet, you come to a, I think it's 129. And, and what we've got, I think, is 96. So from a density standpoint, I, I realize it's dense up at, up by, or it's more dense up by Meben Oaks Road, but I, I think the density works here. And I'll let someone much more eloquent than me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, for this opportunity to address specific comments that we've heard. Ms. Oenby covered a lot, and of course you've heard from Mr. Ford, but I did want to touch on a few things. And, and we'll start where we left off. In terms of comments that were made about why can't this all just be single-family? I think we've just heard some discussion about that from a math standpoint, but I want to point out a comment that I made at the beginning. The, the front part of this assemblage where we're showing multifamily is zoned commercial right now. So the notion of this whole thing being single-family, you know, I think that, that die has been cast already, that that's not what's going to happen. And, and that decision was made well before we, we came on the scene, or even our predecessors that we somewhat inherited things from came on the scene. And that makes sense, because, you know, you've heard tonight about the status quo of the area without, without this project. It already, it's, it's busy, it's, it's bustling, it's, it's got a lot of trips, it's got a lot of destination draw, it's got a lot of growth happening that doesn't really lend itself to single-family homes backing up to Meben, Meben Oaks Road.
If I could just jump in one second, I think I remember earlier you were saying in your initial comments, the B2, I think what you said was it allows for some intensity, that was the word, those were the words you used. Well, I think what people are saying, and what you may hear from us tonight, is some intensity, that's not 500 and some units.
I, I understand, I was simply making the point that single-family there, that doesn't seem to be in the cards.
But I'm not sure that making the jump from just because it's B2, that you think we're going to allow some intensity to mean 500 plus units, and I don't think that connects.
Understand, thank you. Let's see, I wanted to also address, there was some math discussion about the, the waiver requests. I'm sorry, let me get back to one other point on density. Again, talking about compatibility and harmony with, with our neighbors to the west. At R12, their minimum, they also have a special use permit on that neighborhood. So their lot size is not the 12,000 square feet that Mr. Ford mentioned, they're at 7,700 square feet. So again, the, the decision to make this R8 neighborhood at 8,000 square feet and not ask for any adjustment to that was very intentional, to be as compatible as possible with those neighbors. So, you know, that, that was taken into consideration. And the big, you know, the big transition from the front apartment density to the 8,000 square foot lots, resulting in 96 lots as we transition into this connected, to be quite harmonious. And, you know, we, we do have buffers in this neighborhood. Obviously can't speak for what happened in the development requirements of Arbor Creek, but this neighborhood is, is doing buffers, and we are planting those. There was talk about the vegetation. Yes, we're honest and transparent about the fact that development will take down some existing vegetation. But we will save what we can, and we'll absolutely replant with, you know, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't know what the recommended evergreen species is right now. I know it's not Leland cypress, I think arborvitae, green giant I do hear a lot about. So yes, that, that will be done. We, we do want to provide that nice green opacity. And, and that screening on our side of, on our side of the line, we can do that and we will. So we are, we are being sensitive, and we are trying to create nice neighbors and, and, and nice transitions. On the open space math, there was a talk about, you know, trading out the 24 acres. I think Ms. Oenby talked about this, but I do want to clarify, open space requirement was 7.34 acres, we're offering 7.08. So, so there's a very small de minimis delta there. Private open space was at 5.51 required, we're offering 1.77. And, and I, I would submit to you, as I talked about in my original comments, a large part of that is due to the nature of this apartment community having the more focused and concentrated amenity package that, that we see is, is the, is, is speaking to the demand in the market of residents who, who will want to live here. So the real, the real delta here is about the public recreation component. About 11.78 acres, or excuse me, 11.83 acres of public recreation. So that's in your ordinance as a way for developers to give back to the rest of the community. You've heard tonight about, you know, what does this do for the rest of us, those of us who already live here? So in, in response to that, we, we kind of looked at, looked at the sand on, that was already on the wall, if you will, in terms of the public park that, that was, you know, is what filtered to the top of the last request. And, and we said, okay, that, that obviously is, is what was, what was decided at that time and deemed a good public offering. So we continued with that. And then, you know, those, those discussions led to, well, actually, maybe the public, the public asset, public amenities, public provision that we need here is in, in the way of public safety. And, and I think, you know, the fact that this plan says to be determined on that public aspect is, is the city leadership taking a beat to see what, what it is that is going to serve the public best here. So I think that that dedication, you know, this plan having that, having that balance in it of providing something for existing residents and residents beyond this neighborhood has, has been addressed and has been accounted for. We're just simply providing the city a, a palette and the way for it to decide, you know, what is the best way? We've heard a lot tonight from folks about, you know, things that they feel like are needed in this part of the town. So I think, I think your city leadership is saying, yeah, we recognize that there are some things that could, could be better down here, and so we're trying to take the opportunities where we can to, to get some opportunities to address that.
But even, even with that being said, there's still eight acres missing. You're still asking for a waiver of, so.
You're right, it's not a, it's not an exact thing, I was just trying to offer some context around it since it did come up, but yes.
Can you speak quickly to the price point on the apartments? I know that was one of the first questions that came.
I will address that just out of openness and transparency, but I will, you know, also remind everyone on the record, that certainly is not a, a part of a zoning request that we're, we're allowed to consider, but yes, we want to be open. There's, there's no low income or subsidy aspect to this, this is an at-market project. It's a Class A project, and I can let Frank or John speak to where rents are, rents are trending right now. But Meben has a 96% occupancy rate in your multifamily product. So, you know, the rent, rents right now are, are in keeping with that trend. I'll let Frank speak more, more to the exactitude, and that could change in the two years before these are built. But, but this is a, a high-market Class A on, on market.
That's, okay, that's, that's your answer, okay.
That's good, good.
Appreciate that. And, and just in closing, I'll say, you know, I, I really appreciate the, the dialogue and the participation from the community. And, and I understand, I understand why this is important and why they're passionate about it. And I know that there's a lot of feelings and, and, you know, observational testimony, if you will, that we've heard tonight. But I also know that Meben has a very excellent staff of experts and people that are positioned and tasked with studying these things and deciding these things and writing your development regulations and followed. And so the rigorous TRC process that we've been through to get here is, is not, is not to be taken lightly. And, and I want to commend Meben on its process and on its procedures. And that, you know, that is really the best check and balance to the things you're hearing tonight, is that you have a very rigorous process. You have excellent professionals and experts trained in these aspects, and they do their job, and they take us to task to make sure that we do ours. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was just wondering if we could get, even though it's not a requirement for the rezoning, she was starting to give the answer or refer to get the answer, for what the price points are though, actually, for the apartments and for the single-family.
Mr. Ford, if you want to answer that, you can, you're not, you don't have to, but if you want to provide that, go right ahead.
Here's what I will say, in, in deference to everybody, these are not low income or, or what have you. They'll also not be built until 2024. So I don't mean to be flippant here, but, but, you know, we're in the apartment business. We will rent these apartments for what an apartment in Meben can go for in 2024. It, it's going to be somewhere between 15, $1,600 and $2,200 to $2,400, I would assume, okay? And having said that, I, I would be remiss, and if, if one of the gentlemen I worked for, Ms. Hodian said that Meben is currently at 96%, and, and that's basically what Meben's getting now, somewhere between 1,400 and 1,900. And he would say that's because they're not charging enough rent. But I, I don't think that that's necessarily the case, but these will be market rent apartments and Class A apartments, fully amenitized. And the single-family homes will, again, I, I don't want to, again, be flippant, but if I were to say, you know, I think if I was here at this microphone five years ago and I said $250,000, people would gasp. And then if I was here three years ago and I said $650,000, people would say, that's a good deal. And so, you know, we have seen the fluctuation of the single-family market go just really crazy, not only here in Meben, but, but all across North Carolina. And, and, and so I think what we'll do is we will market these for sale at the market rate that they'll go for at that time. But, and I would imagine, you know, again, they're, they're about 22, 24, 2,500 square feet, at about $200 a square foot is, is basically what we would see. But again, and, and the single-family homes would really not come online probably until 2026. So, you know, I think we have to let the market play out.
All right. If there's one thing, we can quick, we haven't had our discussion yet, so go ahead.
Somebody mentioned construction traffic. So to Ms. Oenby's point, this is a approved site plan rezoning, and part of that is the phasing. So when we keep talking about Phase 4, that will come last. So, so that connection won't even get made until the construction is complete. And one of the reasons for that is to ensure that construction traffic is not using Manorfield and Arbor Creek. And that, that is a part of the approved site plan, or if it were approved, approved site plan package.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, we, we probably need to get our discussion going. If you don't mind, I'll just jump right in, that's fine. I don't want to be a Danny Downer, although I, I feel that most people here are going to appreciate what I have to say. And I don't think anyone here is going to be very surprised about what I say. I've been questioning the need for more apartments for years, for a really, really long time. Not just the need, but the appropriateness. As a fact, you know, as a prior professional planner and how, and planning director myself, I've been really concerned about the ratio of apartments in our housing stock. In fact, I asked Ashley to look into this on Friday, we'll get into this more in my comments. But we didn't have that data readily available. And so, you know, something, it was probably a super task to ask her to do that, she couldn't get that together, but we will talk about it in a minute.
I did email that.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it, okay. Well, if you did it, it must have been a really late afternoon.
It was right at 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock, late afternoon, okay, well, I did not get it, but thank you for doing it, but.
I'm happy to review it.
Okay, cool, let me get to my comments, and we can, you can, you can do that. You know, I'm not alone. I, I taught, ever since I've sort of taken the banner and said, hey, maybe too many apartments, everyone's coming to me, everybody's calling me. And not only that, you know.
I see it all the time.
People complaining about the number of apartments in Meben and the traffic, and, you know, they're, they're always talking about, the question desire and the need like I do, but they talk about traffic overcrowding, school crowding, crime, density, and so on. Those are all the main topics with apartments, we all know that's the case. So, but I'm, you know, I, I'm not against apartments, I always say that too, when I bring it up. It's not that I hate apartments or I'm against apartments. We need apartments for a healthy housing stock. But I think we need to be concerned about getting a ratio that's too high. And so I've been promoting this idea that we need, just pleading, not promoting, pleading, asking, to do a study. I think it's very simple. We just need to do a study to see how many is appropriate for a city our size and our location along the interstate. We need to do a study, it's not that hard to do. And it's just, and I knew this day would come. This day would come when we have 320 units coming before us, and we have no study, we, we don't, we have no clue. In fact, I would propose that the simple fact that Ashley didn't know, and I'm not blaming you because you just taken this position, and, you know, I'm not blaming you. But the simple fact that we didn't know how many apartments have in our ratio is a red flag to me. So my, my concern is even elevated more because I, I'm now to the fact, nobody's asking these questions. Am I the only person that's asking these questions in the city of Meben? And, and I've done it very publicly. All of you remember how many times I said we need to do a study of how many apartments? And, and it's crickets. And so I just think that it's inappropriate to move forward and, and just continue to, to add and add and add and add apartments when we have no clue, we have no clue if it's the right thing to do. Okay? So let's just start there if I can, and I made some more, made a bunch of comments, I'm going to try to go through them fairly quickly. But again, I don't hate apartments, I just need to make sure, you know, we need to make sure, the council needs to make sure, that we're not getting too high of a ratio that's unhealthy, okay? That's, that's my main point there. My main arguments against this proposal. First, we need to understand that we collectively, with the city council, have the authority to decide how we want to grow. Okay, that's fundamentally important, that we all need to understand that. And I can appreciate that the fact that the developer has been to the technical review committee six times. That's tough, and that's a hardship, that's a lot of time, that coming up with site plans, changing things, going back and forth, emails. I, I understand, that's, that's a big deal. But what they're looking at there, those are technicalities. Those are, that's what it costs, a technical review committee, they're looking at, does it fit on the plan? Can the fire truck get through? You know, things like that. Are the sex backs, are they, are, we look over that, have you done the sex backs? Yes, okay. Those are technicalities. But we don't, we start looking at it when we start looking at if it works, or should it fit issues? Those, that's where we get involved. So the fact that they've been to the technical review committee six times, that's great. But from what we do, we do something totally different, and the city council does something totally different. They just know when they get the plan in front of them, that it fits and everything works and, and those, those kind of things. I just, that's an important point I need to make. And I, and I've been, and this is something, I, I, do I really want to say this?
I do now.
Over the years, I've really been sick to death of hearing over and over, even from prior elected officials and people in authority, that we are going to grow whether or not we want it to happen or not. I mean, it was all this like, it was this fatalistic argument that just is so misleading. And it's, I think it's misleading because, yes, there, there are some ways we are going to grow. And those, the main reasons, and I wrote it down here, we will grow mainly when the land use conforms with the type of, type of development that the landowner wants to develop. Okay, again, let me propose, let me say that again. When the land conforms to the type of development that is proposed, that's the, that's most often when we grow. And if it's not, what do they ask for? They ask for a rezoning, right? Okay, so that's the next thing. Well, sometimes the proposed development makes sense when we make a land zoning change. It just, it's a no-brainer. It fits in, or it's, it's appropriate, it's going from here to here to here, it's, it's a domino effect, okay? So that happens. Sometimes the proposed, proposed development carries with it many benefits with very few or hardly any downsides. Okay, so in that case, sometimes it's appropriate. In this case, I really feel that there are many downsides. Okay, just many. And, and, and most of that is, well, I don't say most, but a lot of it has, comes into play that we just don't simply know how many apartments are healthy for our town. And we can get into traffic and other state, other than that in just a minute. But keep in mind, they need to be annexed, and they need a land use change to make this happen. Let's not lose sight of this, okay? They need to be annexed, and they need us to make a land use change. Otherwise, this doesn't happen, okay? So what does this tell us? They need us more than we need them. I mean, I think it's my job to say these kind of things, because I don't think enough people are saying it when developers come to us, because it's always just grow, 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 and then that fatalistic attitude of, well, we're going to grow, let's just sit back, it's going to happen. Well, it doesn't have to happen, and if it does, it needs to be super appropriate. And again, I get back to. And again, I get back to the, what's appropriate? We don't know. We've done no plan. I've asked for it for about four years. And now we got three-hundred-and-twenty more. I'm beating that dead horse, and that's okay. But yes, I mean, they want to maximize their return, maximize their density, monetary return possibly. You know, they're going to the R-eight overall density for this whole site. So the, the idea that, you know, this, what I write down, some intensity because we had B-two in the front, that doesn't translate to four-hundred, is it four-hundred-and-sixteen? Four-hundred-and-sixteen on this one site, to me, just because you have a little B-two over on Meven Oaks. Okay? So again, there's no, that's a huge disconnect to me. And I'm proposing that we'd be allowing three, they're proposing we allow three-hundred-and-twenty more apartments when we don't know we need them, and I just don't think we need them. And I hope the council agrees. I don't think we need that many more apartments, at least until we do a study. And I'm sick and tired of hearing we don't have power. The council has all the power. We recommend, we have a little power because we can say things like this and sort of lay the groundwork for them to think through the issues. And that's why we're here. We're trying to set the groundwork for them to go, "Hmm, what Kurt said, that, that makes sense. We do have power. Do we really need three-hundred-and-twenty more apartments?" I, I'm not sure. Let's do a study. How about that? Ha, ha. Okay? So anyway, back to that. And don't get me started on the variance, the waiver. I mean, I know it's, you know, maybe you don't need it, but just the simple fact that every time we come up here with a development, there's a waiver. It's just, it's, it's just getting sickening. I'm just getting tired of it. Our regulations are minimums. They're absolute minimums. We set the standard for the minimum. Sometimes they can ask for a waiver. It's conditional, that's okay. But it's always, it's always waivers here, here and there. It's just, it's, I'm, I'm, we're, I think we're all sort of tired of, of waivers. But more fundamentally, let's look at the need issue. I'm hearing them saying there's a very high or very low rate that, you know, people want to be in these apartments. Well, okay, I did some research just today. So if you will, just give me a moment. I looked online, my wife helped me, and we looked at the available apartment units in our town. Just bear with me. And these are apartments that were shown on their websites today, either available or they are taking applications, which means they are coming opening very soon. And I'm going to list these. The apartments on 119, eighteen units are available. Deerfield, three. Spring Forest, ten. Alexander Point, eight. Philstone, seven. Stone Brook, thirty-five. Keystone, forty. Carden Place, twenty-seven. Arrowhead, two. McPherson, one. Elmwood, one. Ashbury, eleven. That is one-hundred-and-sixty-three units available today. So don't tell me that we need more apartments when you can easily go online and put in an application and get one of these one-hundred-and-sixty-three units. Okay? Down the road, let's look a little bit farther. Let's look in, let's, just for kicks and giggles, let's go down to Graham. And we all know where, where Graham has turned into Apartment Central. Where is it? Everybody, come on, tell me where Graham is Apartment Central. Fifty-four, absolutely. So we just looked at, right there at fifty-four. A disaster, by the way. I won't go that way anymore. And you're right, I don't want us to become that. But let me just look at this. Waterside, seven. Elevate Hall River, thirty-six. Elevate Fifty-four, fifteen. Watercourse, six. Park Ridge, four. The Pines, four. Another seventy-two. So you have the seven, two... Available units between Meven and Graham. So I think I've debunked the issue that we need them. Oh, I think I have. So let's not say we need more apartments. So if we don't need more apartments and we don't have people that can't find housing that need that type of housing, why are we building them when we don't know we need them or we've done a study for it? It's absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion. And I don't think we can continue going down this road. The last gentleman that talked, he's absolutely right. What do we get out of it? What do this, what does the local residents right now get out of this? I would propose, I propose nothing. Absolutely nothing. I've got comments on here somewhere about it, but I'm getting so excited about it, I'm going to have to look on here for a second. So what do we have? Yes, what do we have? What's the benefit for the existing citizens? I would propose none or very few aside from the overcrowding, exacerbating congestion, or terrible traffic. That's what we're getting. Okay? We, we get, we possibly get a land for a police station or a park or whatever, but isn't that due to the growth to begin with? So I, all this is connected, and I, I know I'm getting worked up, but we don't even know what that land's for. They're saying they added it on there because it was a leftover. It was a handover from the last thing. I, you know, I get that, and I appreciate that they're willing to do that. And maybe people in the city know what they want to do with that. I don't. I would rather have it like a park or, you know, whatever y'all talked about. But I would say that out of these four-hundred-and-sixteen units, we, we are getting nothing. And I'm, you know, it is tiring, and I understand, I have people come to us all the time. Why do you keep approving something when us, the citizens, get no benefit other than traffic and overcrowded schools? And I know we can't, we can't talk about overcrowded schools, but we can look at things in a holistic approach. You know, we can. And we're not going to vote this down because of schools. We'd be in trouble with that. We can't do that. But we can look at, take a holistic approach of everything that's going on in the city. So I'm going to end this very quickly. And I've talked a lot, but I want everyone on this board to understand, and the council, and I'm not preaching to them, they know this already, but I'm trying to emphasize the fact that we get to decide what type of growth to approve. And we have the power to try to keep our city positively charming, like the last gentleman said, like we like to claim. And I, for one, know that I'm not alone in this fight against apartments if they're necessary or needed. I've already debunked that they're needed. So I, I just simply would like to say thank you for your interest, but it's not the kind of development we want or need.
Since research was alluded to, I would just like to take a moment to review it. So I didn't immediately respond to your email because we did not have our spreadsheet updated with the current census data. I did whenever the redevelopment of the old Kingsdown property came forward at the October council meeting, reviewed that spreadsheet during the meeting. It indicated that our current share of apartments is about thirty-three percent, and looking ten years into the future, would be down to thirty percent with the projects that had been approved.
Is it thirty-three, is it thirty-three percent including this?
So in the research that I completed today, our current rate is sixty-eight percent single-family and thirty-two percent multifamily. When you consider the single-family and multifamily that's already been approved, that rate is seventy-thirty. And then when you add in just the Evolve project, not the other single-family projects that have been submitted to our technical review committee but have yet to make it to you, it remains at seventy-thirty.
Okay. Thank you. My opinion, this is my opinion, and keep in mind that I was a professional planner and, and a past life. And I want to keep Meven absolutely charming. I do. And I think thirty percent apartments are too many. So if you were at thirty-three now, and with all this, we're going to get down to thirty, and we keep, that's too many, in my opinion. That's absolutely too many. One out of three, I don't think that's healthy. And I think that we all need to consider that. The council needs to consider that. It's not healthy. And I think a study would bear me out on that. Because I remember when we looked at this years ago, it was about five years ago, we were the highest one in percentage at that time. This was before you. But we were like at thirty-seven, thirty-eight. And that was way out of line. And that's when the red flags went up with me, like, whoa, we need to do something. Well, where's the end? We're going to be fifty? One house for one apartment, and one house for apartment, and one townhome apartment, and one condo apartment? That's too many. I think thirty percent is way too many. So thank you. That proves my point.
I'd also, just want to point out, the staff also had been asked to research the occupancy rate of current apartments, and that was also sent this afternoon. So Rachel did some calls last week, and it was as of what's leased in July. And that was, there were one-hundred-and-eleven units that were available at that time. The percentage that you gave Kurt would have our occupancy at ninety-four percent. That's assuming some of the options available online are for lease probably in August or September, if they're trying to fill their apartments. And then I wanted to note that Ms. Christians is right in terms of our technical review committee. We do look at our ordinance and the requirements and make sure that the project works. But we also look at our comprehensive land development plan. We look at our other long-range planning documents. The applicant's attorney did a good job reviewing the goals that are included in our comp plan. So it is a technical process, but it is also a process to consider the long-range planning documents. We will be updating our comp plan soon, so I'm sure housing will be a component of that and can be incorporated into the study.
Well, I would add to that simply that if I had to come, this isn't a special use permit. We don't have to come up with four findings of fact and have to, if, if one's out of line and they all have to go, and, or, you know, that, we're not, that's not a, before us today. They've got a conditional zoning, which is a different animal. And I think from what I've learned from the issue of government, you can pretty much decline a conditional rezoning request for any whim. It's not good to do so. It's good to hang your hat on something. But if I had to hang my hat on something based on what I've told you and how many apartments we have, not knowing how many we need, then I would say that simply it's not harmonious in the surrounding area. It's not harmonious. You're putting R-eight zoning beside, and R-twenty beside R-twelve, and R-twenty below it. So if I have to hang my hat on one, not that I have to, I don't think, because David Owens told me years ago, in conditional zoning, you don't like the request, just shoot it down. He might change his mind today, but I remember, I remember writing that down. Well, but if I had to hang my hat on it, it's not harmonious. And I would add on top of that, it's not the kind of development we need. And that would be my motion.
Questions, comments?
Did you have a comment, Colin? I thought you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to ask the developers, is the cut through to Arbor Creek critical for the development? Like, I know, it sounded like you added it because you were trying to follow the city's rules for interconnecting. Is there anything about the development? So the state requires it?
The city doesn't like things to end.
No, I, no, I understand. Right, I get that point.
It was never an option not to have it.
Okay. So it's required by the city?
The city.
Okay. I guess the only other comment I would have is the, in terms of the land being dedicated for the park or the police station, the, the city, the city is, doesn't like to pay for land, in my opinion. That's not me speaking from the board. That's me speaking as an observer of the city's behavior. The city doesn't like to pay for land. And they are looking for a place to put a police, what I would call a police administrative center. You call it a police station, it's not really that. It's like police offices. But they're looking for a place to put it because right now their only police station, which is on Center Street, is on, I think, a little more than a third of an acre. And that's just not enough space for all of the work that they need to do. They need a place to store things. So they are looking for a place to build a new police center. And because of the way that Meven has grown, because, because the city has continued to sprawl outward, which, and create very high land values sort of all around it, they are looking at a bunch of sites that are available and saying, "Oh, that's too expensive. Oh, that's too expensive. We can't afford that." And those are judgments that the city manager is making. And so the, the reason I'm bringing this up, there's a risk. And it's kind of like the risk we saw with Kingsdown where they, you know, if you remember the Kingsdown apartments, there was a suggestion from the, from the city, I mean, from the, from people in the town, like, oh, this, this property could be a really great park. The city could, should buy it. And I think it turned out that the city had made an offer to buy it, but it, they hadn't been able to pay enough money. If this developer is offering this land to the city for use as either police administrative center or a park, or both, it's seven acres, you can fit a lot on seven acres, the risk for us here at the planning board is that if you say no, obviously, we all know we're only an advisory board, if you say no, and, and they decide they want to go on to the city council anyway, and the city council and city manager decide, "Oh, we really need that land for, for this police station. We've got big ideas for a police station. We could never afford the land. This is such a great offer. We're going to go for it." If we say no and they say yes, I mean, we have upheld our honor, certainly, but we also lost our ability to shape the project. And so it might be good to talk more about, like, well, what, you know, are there conditions under which the planning board would think that this project was, was acceptable? Because the, the council takes us seriously. I'm just worried that they're going to look at this offer of seven and a half acres for, for the police station and be like, "Ah, we're going to save, you know, five million dollars, six million dollars, whatever." And that that's going to mean that they're going to make that trade-off, and we lose what we can contribute to the project.
I really don't think the council is going to make a decision to approve this just based on them dedicating land. There, that, that would be, that would be totally inappropriate. That'd be totally inappropriate, and I know that that would not go through their mind to approve something just to get land.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I would like to ask the developer, I've been here for thirty-five years. I developed the first two apartment sites that are in Meven on Deerfield. So I like apartments. I'm not going to have anything to say about the apartments, except that this project, as I understood it coming about, that the property on Meven Oaks, which is R-two or, or whatever, that that facing Meven Oaks would be commercial. I honestly was gap-smacked last week when I received these plans because I had been told that Meven Oaks would be commercial. I am not opposed to your apartments. They're absolutely beautiful. You wouldn't borrow the money and build them if you couldn't rent them. I know that. So, and we are at ninety-six percent occupancy right now, so that's, and that's all good for what anyone wants to think. I'm not opposed to that. But why couldn't we have about twelve to twenty-eight thousand square feet of retail, or however much you could put there, in the first seventy-five feet in on, on Meven Oaks? I just was expecting that, and I was hoping to see that because we need more retail. But maybe people don't think we need more retail, but we actually do need more retail, so... We, we need places to eat. I don't think you're going to get a good steakhouse on there, but anyway, that, if, would you address why we lost, was the retail ever...
It was. And, and the prior folks at Diamondback had, had provided that. And I think at one point in time, and I wasn't privy to their discussions or the initial conversation between them and the, the city's, and technical review staff, if you will. But I think it was because their zoning request was somewhat different than ours in that I understand that they were going to leave the front part of the property as B-two with a, and, and I believe apartments are allowed in B-two. And so, or, or the compromise was, will you give us apartments if we allow the, if we put retail up there? And, and, and when it came to us, we, we are not retail developers, although we do have mixed use in, in a couple of locations. And to Ms., Mr., to Colin's point, I'm sorry, I can't see your name. I don't want to mispronounce it. Excuse me. So we didn't, we didn't put retail on it because that's not really what we do. Next to connectivity is what I was going to say, the, the catchphrase in planning is mixed use. We think that we kind of established mixed use here with what, what... We think that we kind of established mixed use here with what, what may be an institutional use or a park use, the, the apartment use, which in some places are considered to be commercial. You're correct, it does not have that retail component up front. But I think our buildings give it a retail feel, and, and we're hopeful that, that it'll have retail along Meben Oaks. To Mr. Pearson's comment, he did look up and he found units that were for rent, and I think he said there were something like 400 and something. On my phone just a minute ago, I went for single-family, and in four websites, I found over 500 listings for single-family homes for sale. So I think that it's a little bit disingenuous to say that I went online and there were apartments for sale, and therefore we don't need apartments. I think there's probably retail vacancy in the city of Meben, and I certainly wouldn't expect the town to argue, or the board to argue, that if there's retail vacancy, there's no need for retail. If there's homes for sale, there's no need for single-family home. And the simple fact that there may be apartments for rent or available doesn't mean that there's any, there's no need for apartments.
I don't think there's anybody saying that if we build them, they won't be filled. The question is, do we want them to be filled?
No, 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 those are two separate issues.
It is two separate issues, you're right.
I totally agree with you.
Right. And I'm saying.
You said that they're not needed.
What, no, I'm saying they're not needed, because we have all this vacancy, and they can go down to Graham, or they can go where they need.
Again, and I know, I don't want to be, I'm a terrible argument.
Look, well, I must say, yes, you will fill them. But do we, as a city, want to fill them? And I think that the, the main problem of that, and what I'm deciding to, why to say that, is the fact that I feel that we already have a too large of a ratio of apartments now.
Fair.
Thank you.
And if I could just address to Mr. Scott's question, just to take it from a planning perspective, I think as we progressed through the last two and a half years, we have seen a very steady increase in the need for housing, as opposed to what I would call, you know, small, small-impact retail.
Representative retail.
And, and that's what, that's what the opportunity was here. And, and I think on balance, I think everyone sort of came to realize there could be a better, arguable need met, to, to provide some housing, as opposed to some small-space retail where the market was pretty soft, and that sort of thing. And I would also say that, you know, we in the development community rely very heavily on your policy guidance documents. So we do look at things like the need for diversity of housing, and the need for different housing variety. So, you know, I heard that the comp plan is coming up for review, and so that might be a great place to examine something like this, so that we could have the proper, you know, forecasting in, in what you do want, and, and what is considered appropriate.
Up to that, I would just add that I don't think anyone could accuse us of not having a diversity in housing if we have 33% of apartments right now. And I'm just trying to rebut some of these as I'm hearing them, because they sound good, those, it sounds good when she says that. But I don't think anyone can come to us and say, we don't have a good diversity. We have maybe an over-diversity in the apartments, and that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. And if no one else has a comment, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to deny, okay, the R8 CD rezoning as presented due to a lack of harmony in the surrounding area. And, and I, you know, I don't know if I want to add to all the reasons, therefore I said before this, the simple fact that we just have too many apartments, you can just add that. Maybe that will get us to do a study. If someone doesn't agree with me, then show me a study. So those two reasons. And if you deny, if you go against my motion, what you're telling the council, you are for the project. And that's how I'm seeing it. So there's my motion. Anybody want to second it?
Second.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor for the, now?
Aye.
And those opposed? Got two, two opposed. This will go to city council on August 7th at 6:00 PM, I believe.
Can I ask a quick question? Does that mean the city council's gonna discuss this again?
Yes.
If it goes to city council.
If they want to move forward, they have the right to do that, yes.
They make the final say-so. All right, any new business?
So this is just to alert you, we have some upcoming emails from staff. Some time ago, you received an email about setting up a city email account. We'd like to get those active, so if you happen to activate them, if you could come see us afterwards, so that we don't reset your password. But if you did not, we will be resetting everyone's password and sending out new instructions, and also just some information about what it means to have a city email account.
When did that come out?
It was when we updated our website. I'm not sure of the date, it's been probably a year ago or more.
I might need a new request to do that.
Yeah, I think everyone does, but I just wanted to make sure no one was actively using it.
Am I gonna get a, an email account as part?
Yes. And then you'll also get an email about updating rules and procedures. Audrey and I found it whenever you had your training in October, and then in reviewing it with our newest member. It's very clearly outdated, it was adopted in 1999. So we'll be sending that out just for your review and for a discussion at a future meeting to get that cleaned up.
Good.
Actually, we had a, can I ask a question about the city email accounts? Will there be one main account that people can utilize that would come to all of us?
Yeah, so with our bike ped committee, we have it to where you email bpac@cityofmeben.com. And for planning board, it would be an email to planningboard@cityofmeben.com. Staff would be included on the email to make sure, I'm not crying, my eyes just watering, would be included on the email to make sure that, you know, no one's responding to something that they shouldn't respond to, things of that nature.
And would we need to send responses? Could we send them directly, or would we need to send to the person that wrote to us? Or can, do we need to send them through you guys?
You're always, like, the emails we forwarded to you this past week or so, you're always welcome to respond directly to those individuals with knowledge that it's public record, and that you're representing the city when you do so. Yeah.
Thank you very much. There's nothing else, we will be adjourned.